Well, thanks for the response. That's glad to hear. And my other comment was, I was also glad to hear that the bus cameras will be upgraded to new digital video systems. What's the point of having cameras on buses if they're antiquated and don't function? So, thank you to Mr. Roggerio for recently negotiating this issue with the NRT. And the agreement was financially advantageous to the district and will lead to improved student safety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marchese.
Just one other, Mr. Roggerio, correct me if I'm wrong, but there have been multiple instances where we have needed the buses to move the kids around and North Reg to provide those buses, no additional cost to the school system.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, one mishap in so many years of service, I think, granted, it was a field communication error, but the company themselves have, the service has been outstanding to the community. So, I think people out there need to know that, so.
We asked a lot of children to the parents, because a lot of those kids were, you know, maybe left home alone, too, because they were, you know, middle schools, now the parents are off to work. And so, we wanted to make sure that the parents know that we were on top of it, and hopefully it won't happen again, who says, you know, but, you know, they know that, you know, everything, so.
Thank you. Excellent discussion. All right, we have a motion that we would extend the option, and we have a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Perfect timing. Our next item of new business would be scoreboard donations. Can I ask Mr. Harrison to come up? Mr. Harrison, could you join us, please? Thank you. I know he's on his way to the, what's the basketball score? What's the, what's the girls' basketball score? Any news?
The girls?
Girls, are they playing basketball?
Yes, I didn't.
You don't have the score, all right. We'll get you the hockey game. He can't get the score yet, he doesn't have a scoreboard. It's coming. You have a proposal in front of you, a memo from Mr. Harrison, informing you that the Wilmington Sons of Italy and Wilmington Youth Lacrosse Association would like to donate scoreboards for the Wilmington High School and Woburn Street School athletic fields. And the Sons of Italy will donate the scoreboard for the varsity baseball program at the high school and half the cost of lacrosse scoreboard at the Woburn Street, and the Wilmington Lacrosse Association will donate the remaining half of the scoreboard. And there are letters in your packet from the associations, plus a design for the scoreboards. And I ask Mr. Harrison to be here to answer any questions. Mr. Hayes?
Comment, question, comment. So, obviously, thank you to the Wilmington Youth Lacrosse Association and Sons of Italy for their donations. Their volunteerism and generosity embodies what makes this town so special. And my question to Mr. Harrison, just curious, what are the conditions of the other scoreboards in town? And does the athletic department have any sort of big-ticket wish list of field improvements?
I have a, we don't have enough time for that question.
You want to get to the hockey game, too?
But on the scoreboards, just to give you a little background on this, if you've been to a lacrosse game at the Woburn, you know, where the boys play at the Woburn Street School, they set up on the other side of the field, everyone sits by the parking lot on the hill, it's a nice, you know, it's a nice place to watch a game. And they have the little flip charts to the score.
Sure.
Now, no one can see the score, and it's a very fast-paced game, the score is changing quite frequently. So, we had a scoreboard at the high school that was on the, it's the JV softball field now. It was a scoreboard that was donated by Northeastern Development. It wasn't, you know, it was used the first couple of years, I think it was put in around 97, 98, was used a couple of years and never used again. I had contacted Northeastern Development and asked if they would mind if we moved the scoreboard. That was the original plan, to move it down to Woburn Street. So, we had it, DPW took it down. I had the scoreboard company that we use, because we have the scoreboards in the gym, out at the football field, it's the same company that services them. They came out, and they found out that some mice had gotten the inside of the scoreboards and ate all the wires. There was nothing left on the inside. So, now we had a scoreboard that, it's obviously, it wasn't, it was going to cost more to fix than to buy brand new. So, I talked with Wilmington Youth, you know, Mike Fay is our coach, our boys' coach, he's, you know, part of the youth program also. And he said that, you know, he might be able to, you know, to come up with maybe half. Talked with Sons of Italy, you know, they were on board. And we also had a malfunction on our baseball scoreboard. We just had replaced the board the year before, all right, for a cost, obviously. And the warranty was one year. We got two months out of it, but the warranty was up, all right? So, and the, the scoreboards that we had, they're all bulbs, they're, it's all, you know, lined, it's all electric in the sense that it's underground wiring. All the new ones are LED, and they're wireless. So, we, we had an opportunity, both Wilmington Youth and the Sons of Italy offered to do whatever they could do. So, anytime we have an opportunity.
The other question is, what is the condition of the rest of the scoreboard?
The ones in the gym, as I've talked with Paul a few times, it's, they're on their last leg, there's no question about it. We have somebody that's interested to help us out, but it's still in the process. The field, the one out at the football field is still, I mean, operational, it gets the most, you know, use, you know, because we have the field hockey soccer, football, you know, out there. So, that one's still okay, but it, again, it's, we still have our problems, we've had, we have had it go out on us a few times. But, I mean, that, you know, that's all we have.
All right, thank you very much.
Dr. Quick?
I have a question, Mr. Harrison. I noticed on the, for the baseball scoreboard, I was a little confused, because I noticed on October 14th, there was a quote for installation for 2375. And then on January 6th, seems like the same type, same exact installation, maybe that's where my confusion is, but it's 3,335.
It's 3,035, 3,335, that's for both. We were going to try to maybe have, you know, maybe the town put it in, or whatever. They contacted us, and they said they would put both scoreboards in, in one day.
Okay, so that's second one for both of them?
And, like I said, so, I went back to the two boards, I told them about the installation, and they wanted it done by them, because, not that we want to hold them accountable, but we want, like I said, if you're putting it in, then you're going to honor it if we have any questions or problems with it.
Okay, so I, so I just want to make sure, because here on the, on the quote for January 6th, it just says baseballs.
It should be two different scoreboards on that, unless you get the wrong one.
Well, there are, but what I'm saying is, is on this, this one here, the, it just says baseball scoreboard. So, that 3,300 is for both.
Is for both.
Okay.
Is for installation of both.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, actually, Mrs. Kane, if you don't mind, a lot of people kind of don't know who the Sons of Italy are and what they do. And if you wouldn't mind, just, I'd like to give just a brief synopsis of what Sons of Italy actually does, and who they are, and how long they've actually been in town, if you don't mind.
Terrific, because my comment has something to do with that, too, in a way.
Okay.
So, that would lead right into me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Marchese.
All right. The Ours of Sons of Italy, affectionately known as OSAIA, is the largest and oldest national organization for men and women of Italian heritage in the United States. Founded in 1905 as a mutual aid society for the early Italian immigrants, today, OSAIA has more than 600,000 members and supports a network of more than 650 chapters coast to coast, making it the leading service advocacy organization for the nation's estimated 26 million people of Italian descent. Its missions include encouraging the study of Italian language and culture in American schools and universities, preserving Italian-American traditions, culture, history, and heritage, promoting closer cultural relations between the United States and Italy. Women have always shared equal rights with men in OSAIA, and women make up about 50% of the membership. Women have held leadership positions at all levels, including state president, national trustee, national vice president, and national president. OSAIA is for people of any, any gender, age, religion, or profession. You don't have to be a Italian, you don't even have to be Italian to join. Whether you're of Italian heritage or simply a love of things Italian, OSAIA welcomes you as a member. Now, this local lodge, the Giuseppe Rocali Lodge, numbered 2183, has actually existed in Wilmington since 1967. And as many laudable people in town have been members of this lodge. And this lodge has been very generous, not only to the town of Wilmington, but many other organizations, such as, the lodge has given significant donations, scholarships to many high school seniors here, Alzheimer's, Casamonte, the Madonna Queen Shrine Commission for Social Justice, Cooley's Anemia, is also giving money to Local Heroes Fund, the Wilmington Moore Library, the Rec Department, Wilmington Little League, youth hockey, and Wilmington High School, also towards a wrestling tournament, and Project Smile. And on average, the lodge itself, this local lodge, 2183, gives on average between $30,000 to $40,000 a year to the town of Wilmington. And they've funded such projects as the Dare Police Card, the Senior Citizens Van, the electronic scoreboard for the, for the high school football field, a pickup truck for the, for the Chief of Police, for the Wilmington Fire Department, playground for the North Intermediate, stadium jackets for the marching band. And just recently, they just jointly hosted a comedy night with the Wilmington Band Parents to raise money for the high school band program. So, it's an absolutely wonderful organization, and if anyone's out there enjoying it and getting involved, they meet on the third Monday of the month at St. Thomas's Villanova Hall, so.
Oh, thank you. Excellent. They've done so much for the community without, without a doubt, and I just wanted to bring up the picture of the scoreboard here, which I really like, and Mr. Marchese alluded to the fact that they.
Mr. Collins, you can show it.
Oh, okay, color copy. I love this idea that we have both the Wilmington Youth Lacrosse on one side and the Sons of Italy on the other, and they would be, they're actually on the scoreboard, those names, because it just shows that, how many organizations work together to do things for our students. And I think that's really admirable, so it's good for us to know. But I do know that the Sons of Italy and, of course, the lacrosse people, that has to do with the sport, so that's a different story, but Sons of Italy don't do these things to have their name known.
No, they don't.
Out there. So, we really, really appreciate it in the schools. All right, absolutely. Thank you for that background, Mr. Marchese. So, do we have any other questions or comments on this? Thank you for this good news, for bringing it to us, Mr. Harrison.
I'm wearing out my KPN League stuff now, so that I can put it away for next year. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, I will take, entertain a motion to accept the gift of the scoreboards. Dr. Quick?
Motion to accept the gifts of the scoreboard.
And a second, Mr. Marchese.
Absolutely.
Although, close in favor, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we've reached 7:30, a little behind. I would entertain a motion for us to move out of public session into a public hearing for the budget hearing, and I believe we have to do roll call. Mrs. Kane?
So, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And a second, Mrs. Carroll, all right. Mrs. Carroll, do we have to say yes?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Mr. Marchese?
Yes.
I'm going to have to get used to go back with, and Mrs. Kane, yes. So, now, we are out of our public session, and we are going to convene our budget hearing, so I'll turn this over to Superintendent Benton.
Thank you. I'm going to give a brief overview of the budget, and Mr. Roggerio is doing handouts for the audience. Superintendent's recommended 2012 budget. Theme is lighting the fire and keeping the spark alive in our students. As you know, the Wilmington Public Schools' mission is to provide a student-centered education that fosters critical inquiry, enabling the individual to be a productive citizen, respectful of self and others, capable of adapting to a changing world and its technology. At my earlier meetings this year on the budget, I pointed out that one of our goals is to bring Wilmington Public Schools into the 21st century, and as Alvin Toffler said, quote, "The illiterate of the 21st century are not those who cannot read or write, but those that cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn." Richard Riley, the Secretary of Education under President Clinton, said, "We are currently preparing students for jobs that don't exist, using technologies that haven't yet been invented in order to solve problems. We don't know our problems yet." So, preparing a budget, it's quite a challenge for superintendents across the United States in thinking about what our students need to be productive members of the global society. The budget request this year asks for an additional 1.7 staff members, foreign language teacher at the high school, because we would like to begin making two years of foreign language requirements, starting with the class of 2015. We would like to add a .2 section to the math co-teacher at the middle school. And lastly, we'd like to hire a halftime strings instructor. As you know, our strings program is, consists of over 700 students, and we have one instructor, and we believe that he needs assistance, and we'd like to add staffing to that. In addition, we have some non-salary changes, an increase of $110,010, having to do with some sped tuitions, computer lease purchase, maintenance, and repairs, visual act supplies. Salary changes total $657,490. This includes step and lane changes, the new positions, and some longevity increases. Also, if you recall, we had some federal grants, stimulus grants that we used, and we are shifting onto the operating budget because, for the costs, because those grants are no longer available. So, the requested increase is for $767,500, which would bring the FY 2012 budget request to $31,467,500. That's a 2.5% increase, which, as you all know from the town manager's presentation on the 31st, he believes that that is an appropriate amount to be included in the budget. Lastly, I'd like to say that this budget process is one that starts almost in August, when I start asking Mr. Roggerio, our Director of Finance and Administration, to start preparing projections of what the costs are going to be for the following year. And then we meet with all our principals and department heads to get their requests and move through the process of coming up with a budget that we feel continues to move Wilmington Public Schools forward without breaking the bank. We realize the financial situation and understand that the state's Chapter 70 money is being reduced. However, I say it all the time, I want to say it again, we have a town manager whose fiscal frugality has paid off, in that he has protected the education budget and has worked with the schools all the years that I've been here, to make sure that the Wilmington Youth, who are our future, get the education that they so deserve. So, I'd like to acknowledge the town manager and his staff, my staff, and particularly Mr. Roggero, who has, does yeoman work, and helping refine pennies, because it comes down to that at some points, to make sure that we have a budget that's adequate for, more than adequate, I take that back, that is, is fruitful for the students of Wilmington. Some of you heard me say this when I'm with my colleagues, I was at a superintendent's meeting today, and they were all talking about the reductions that they're making, and I sort of sit lower in my seat, because I know how difficult that job is. I used to have to do it in Lexington, and to be able to not have to send out pink slips is really remarkable, so. I think at this time, we won't take any questions from the panel.
We'll take questions from the public first, and then questions and comments from the school committee, as I can say. So, if there's anybody who has any questions, comments about this, either the process or where we've arrived, or any, no? Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the school committee? Dr. Quick?
I just want to say thank you so much, first of all, for all the work that you have to put into doing the budget, especially given the economic situation that the state is in and the towns are in. We are very lucky that Mr. Kyra is so fiscally responsible. You know, every day, my father comes, I get a, the paper from, he lives in Reading, and every day, anytime there's a school committee issue, he's like, here's this paper, here's the paper. And I'm just reading, and I just say, thank goodness, you know, we're in Wilmington, because it makes, you make our jobs a lot easier, and I think, given the situations, you know, the current situation that the town, that the state is in, that we are very lucky to be able to have this, the budget the way it is. So, excellent job, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Hayes?
I'm just going to echo a lot of what Dr. Quick and Superintendent Benton has already said. I reached out to surrounding school committees to see what type of FY 12 budget difficulties they're being confronted with. And I was in touch with the chairs of school committees in Andover, Billreka, Burlington, Reading, Tewksbury, and Woburn. And with the exception of Burlington, who has that enormous commercial tax base, no other district is seeing the funding increase that our district is fortunate enough to be receiving. Through wise management on both the town and school sides, Wilmington is not having to make the difficult choices that many school districts across the Commonwealth are currently dealing with. I'm hearing other districts talk about school closures, massive staff layoffs, rising class sizes, activity fees, bus fees, elimination of athletic programs. So, Wilmington, again, is so fortunate to be led by, in my opinion, the best town manager and the best superintendent around. And I also wanted to acknowledge all the proposed capital improvements, excuse me, all the proposed capital improvements to the schools, since these won't come out of the school's budget. In the town manager's FY 12 budget presentation, I was pleased to hear about the upgrades of these existing fire alarms at the north and Woburn Street, roof repairs at the Wildwood, a new furnace at the Buttwell, new hot water storage systems at the Shaw Sheen and at the north, handicap access enhancements at Shaw Sheen, a new minivan with a wheelchair lift, continued playing field improvements, including the creation of a soccer field behind the old Whitfield School, and I could go on and on and on. And finally, I was glad to hear that the town manager, at his budget presentation, say that he and the superintendent are on the same page. And I think it's also safe to say that the superintendent and the school committee are also on the same page, and I fully support this budget and this investment in the future of Wilmington.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. It's very nice. Mr. Marchese?
Just a couple of comments. One regarding the stimulus grant monies, I know last year, we were in a situation where we hadn't used that money, the 250, to pay for salaries, and we knew that money was going away this year, and it's an unfortunate circumstance, we don't have that, so we had to put that money to the budget. I mean, going forwards, you know, one-time funds, you know, I, I mean, it was what it was last year, and I understand that, Mr. Roggero and Mrs. Benton, but that type of money should go into capital improvements or, in the future, or something like that, because when you put it towards salaries and that money doesn't come in, it's, you know, it's, do you keep the job, or you don't keep the job? You know, and fortunately, we're lucky this year, we have the excess funds to keep those jobs. So, now, I know, you know, Mrs. Benton, Mr. Roggero, you've done a phenomenal job with the budget, and we have a great school system, and Mr. Hayes, you praised Mr. Kyra as well, he's also done a great job.
He's been.
But, but, but the one thing that I think that we're all forgetting is that, the community, the people of this community, they're the ones who vote at town meeting, who approve our budget. Mr. Kyra does a phenomenal job, don't get me wrong, he's a phenomenal town manager, he's very conservative, he's led this town for over 20 years, he's done a phenomenal job. But what we need to do is remember to thank the people out there, the community, because at town meeting, they're the ones who ultimately vote, you know, to support us or not to support us. And this community has been supportive of these school systems for so many years, and again, I want to thank the people out there for supporting us and supporting our schools. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Do we have any?
No, we have to go out of this and then go in, go back into regular session.
To take a vote. Okay. Okay, do we have any more, any more questions or comments or anything? All right, now we're going to go out of our budget hearing, I'd entertain a motion to return to regular session. Dr. Quick?
Motion to return to regular session.
Do we have a second, Mr. Hayes? Thank you. Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Marchese?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kane, yes. Okay. Okay, now, we're back in our regular session, and now, during our regular session, I will entertain a motion to, I don't have the exact amount written in front of me. Oh, I, I'm sorry. 31, I do, I'm sorry. I'd entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented. I think you have to split it, because Kathleen can't vote on this section. Oh, that's right, do we have it split?
Yeah, yeah. Give it to you.
We're going to split it, because you're not able to vote on one of the sections.
Sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Salary.
All right.
24 million.
Am I able to vote on this? Yes, okay. All right. Our first vote will be to approve the salary budget for $24,313,496.
Can I just say so moved?
Mr. Hayes, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Marchese, thank you. Mrs. Carroll?
Abstained.
Abstained, yes, that's okay. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Marchese?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane, yes. And then our second vote would be for non-salary items, $7,154,400. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Marchese, and second, Mrs. Carroll, that's good, okay. Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Marchese?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane, yes. And then our second vote would be for non-salary items, $7,154,400. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Marchese, and second, Mrs. Carroll, that's good, okay. Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Marchese?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane, yes. Okay. That would be our budget for this year. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Our next item, the information security plan. Oh, here we are. Thank you. We're going to invite Mr. Ellis to the table, and we'll be introduced to our new. Yes, could you do that?
Mark Marzini is our junior manager.
How do you do? It's nice to meet you, welcome.
I just want to say that Mark has been with us for a few short months, but has certainly done a phenomenal job, and Neil is looking much more rested now that Mark's.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kane, the Massachusetts regulations were changed under 201 CMR. We are now required to develop an informational security plan for the Wilmington Public Schools, and Mark and Neil are here to talk about the proposed plan. If you wouldn't acknowledge them, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, we're glad to have you. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you. The plan that we have, it's called the WISP, it's a regulated plan from the state. They've recently, Paul knows a little bit more about the, the exact regulation on this, but they require every district to have an information security plan. And we developed this, this one. This, it basically outlines the, our general scope of, of encryption and data security. There are other policies that we have kind of in place in the district that go a little bit deeper than this, that we've had for quite a while. This sort of, kind of solidifies all of those that we, we had already kind of had in place, so. And Mark, Mark was responsible for writing this and putting it all together, so.
Excellent. Does, do we have any questions? Mr. Marchese?
Are there any additional costs associated with final implementation of this, and updating it, and getting any necessary, we need shredders, or, you know, I don't know, whatever?
If so, it would be minimal on top of, most of the stuff that's in here, we already addressed in some way already, so I wouldn't see any additional, any additional even time or work required to fulfill any of the things in, in this plan.
Okay, so, whatever we did need it is in the FY 12 budget?
Sure, yes, yes.
Okay.
Do we have, Mr. Roggero?
One thing we'll point out, we, as we mentioned before, we have a new cop here of lease, three-year lease with new machines, and one of the things that, you had a discussion with the leasing company, we put in place was the ability to erase the hard drive after copies are made, again, part of the security plan. That came actually, leasing contract, we saved a little over $5,000 per year compared to what it was, so there was no, as Neil mentioned, no additional cost, but we were able to negotiate some, some items into that lease in particular to help us from a security standpoint.
And Mark is going to put in place some more changes to make sure that our system is, is secure with a, a protocol around changing of passwords twice, twice a year. Could you talk a little bit about that, Mark?
Sure. Part of the security plan that we wrote up was to include a password-changing policy, which is a pretty standard policy that I've been in the process of drawing up and ready to roll out probably in the next week or so. This will ensure that every user in the district is changing their password, and doing so to provide themselves with a more complex password that will include, you know, variety Part of this will entail user education and letting them know that passwords aren't just to keep staff members of Wilmington safe from people on the outside, but also bring the education to an individual user level where they understand that a password is to keep themselves safe from anybody around them, and that this is really a personal issue, so it's not to be written down and kept on a desk or anything like that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hayes, you don't have any questions on this area?
Well, I have to admit, some of it was actually over my head, so I, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep quiet on this agenda item.
That's great. I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
They could be all way off, though. I was noticing on F disposal that when things are no longer needed, electronic personal information turned by the school to be no longer needed must be destroyed or deleted. Is this on a school-by-school basis with the principals? Is it at the Roman House level? Who decides when it's been, when it's no longer needed and who actually destroys it? Do you destroy it through your office?
Well, I guess there are certain, there are some, there are different tiers to that. There's information certainly that the principals have, paper documents, not so much electronic. They don't really keep electronic documents, most electronic documents with user, you know, I guess, you know, information like social security numbers and that kind of thing, that stuff's all kept in a central database, so none of that stuff ever resides at the location. When it comes to personal computers and the desktops in the classroom, when those, you know, come of age and they're no longer needed, we do extract the hard drives before we send the computers out for recycling and destroy all the hard drives before disposing of them. So that information's all kept secure. When it comes to, say, USBs, maybe discs that teachers might have of information, a lot of that comes down of just common sense and policies like these, and teachers are good about making sure that student information is kept secure and that's not left open or that anyone can access it.
That brings to mind the number of emails going back and forth between parents and teachers constantly. Are those emails, are the teachers supposed to destroy those emails, or do they keep them in folders, or what happens?
Well, they're actually, well, we have a central archive for those, because there's an additional state regulation that requires municipalities in public education to archive every single correspondence over email and keep it for, I believe, I'm not sure what the, for, I think indefinitely. But our plan, our internal policy is to keep it indefinitely. So we do that, so any correspondence between a parent or a teacher and a student, they're all, they're all archived and kept separately from our mail system on an additional server that keeps all of those emails, as well as the email that's kept within the email server. So teachers do keep their own emails for their own purposes, and those are usually locked into the computer, that people cannot access those.
So you must have a lot of space there.
No. We'd like more, you know.
Yeah.
Always can need more.
I could see that could be a problem.
Yeah, it's, we, when we specify the technical specs for the archive box, we made sure to at least have enough space for seven years on this, on this one, yeah.
Thank you. And I just had one more. On monitoring, it says the school periodically reviews and monitors the performance of its third-party service providers, so that each is applying protective security measures at least as stringent as those required by the program. Do we have a lot of those?
We have a few. One that comes off the top of my head is NutriKids, where that's to a military-grade spec, and that's operated by the NutriKids Corporation, that's, and those of you who don't know, NutriKids is our point-of-sale and for the students to purchase lunch or breakfast. The parents are able to put in online, you know, a credit card number, pay for their students' meals, and those are in the system for the students to use with their card or their PIN at the, at the point-of-sale register at the school the next day. That's all completely secure. We do have a grade book program that teachers can access from outside of school, and that's also very encrypted. Other than that, there aren't too many where there's data flowing in and out of the district on a regular basis.
Does anyone else have, Mr. Jerry?
Obviously, our payroll system has multiple layers of password protection and user rights, if you will, and that, that's the other area where there's personal information, and that's, that's very tight, and that's through our payroll, our accounting and payroll provider.
That is still in the town, even though it does, it does go outside of the schools, but it's still enclosed in the town.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments? I just want to add that, and I'm not saying this in a derogatory or negative way at all, because I know from Mrs. Benton's support of you, but not being into computers, I was thinking, why do we keep, why do we keep hiring more people, you know, like Mark or the other people to do things? And this report just gave me an idea, just on the surface, of how much more there is to your job. You couldn't even begin to give us a job description, I'm sure, and because it's, it's so detailed and there's so much to keep, I don't know how you do it. So now I understand why we have Mark and we have other people, and so I think this was great that you brought this to us to see, and thank you for all your hard work and for the good personnel that you bring with you.
Oh, thank you.
You're coming fine, so we appreciate it. Mr. Ellis?
Thanks for coming.
Sure.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, our next item of business would be delegations. Delegations tonight, okay. Board members, oh, we'll do other reports after board members turn. Okay, board members, questions and comments. Mrs. Carroll?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mr. Hayes?
A few things. I recently attended the Children of Eden play at the high school, it was really a wonderful performance, and I know, I expect nothing less from the outstanding performing arts department that we have. I attended the most recent meeting of the Wilmington CPAC, and it was a workshop on IEPs, and I have handouts from that evening if any school committee member is interested. I've attended the past two high school building committee meetings, and since there will undoubtedly be misinformation floating out there when residents are eventually asked to vote for some sort of high school improvement, I just wanted to emphasize three facts, non-controversial facts. Having been at the previous two high school building committee meetings, I can say other sites besides the current site are being discussed, new construction is just one of the options being considered, and there will be lots of opportunity for public comment throughout the process. So I've been to the meetings, that's what's happening, and I also want to encourage everyone to complete the district's long-range plan survey. You have until next Tuesday, February 15th, whether you're a staff member, parent, student, or taxpayer, this is your opportunity to have your say on the direction of the Wilmington school system over the next five years. And one last thing I'm gonna bring up, I was gonna say something during the reorganization, and I didn't, but I do want to say it. I nominated Dr. Quick for vice chair because she's the longest-serving member of the board aside from Chairwoman Kane and former Vice Chair Higgins. She seems to have a good working relationship with Chairwoman Kane and Superintendent Benton, and I've, both before joining the board and my, you know, nine months on the board, I've been very impressed with her overall performance. And regarding Mr., the other thing I was gonna say is that I think any of the other candidates sitting on this side of the table would have, would have been, you know, ideal candidates for vice chair. With Mr. Vale, who's unfortunately not here tonight, I think every board needs a Quincy, someone who really thinks outside the box, thinks big picture, isn't afraid to ask difficult questions or be the lone dissenting vote, and what he brings to the board isn't lost on me. And then with Mr. Marchese, I think, Mr. Marchese, you're destined for bigger and better things than the vice chair of the Wilmington School Committee. You're welcome. So that's it for tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go over to Mr. Marchese.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Hayes, for that very nice comment, I appreciate it, thank you. To that end, it's, it's been an interesting year so far, and I'm glad we're actually, actually meeting again, you know, here, so it's nice, it's not snowing outside. To Dr. Quick, I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you.
So I'm voting for you. But it's nice, though, to see some competition out there. It's, it's good to have people run and get involved in the process. It's been a long time in this town that we actually haven't seen people getting involved. It's nice to see people get involved at all levels, be it the school committee, boss, lockman, or whatever it be. We are very lucky in this town to have such a great community and a community that is very charitable. We have a lot of great organizations, Roderick Kwanis, Sons of Italy, but there's one other organization that I want to talk about just briefly on a real serious note. It's, it's called Friendship Lodge here in town, it's part of Freemasonry. The reason why I say that, because they have a fund which is called the Angel Fund. Now, some of you may be thinking, what is the Angel Fund? And just real quick, as an overview, the Angel Fund is the fastest-growing Masonic charity anywhere. It was founded in 1998 by members of Universal Lodge in Orleans, Mass., and it's spread to 144 lodges in 12 states since it's first offered sponsorship. Now, the Masonic Angel Fund is challenging kids' lives, one community, changing kids' lives one community at a time and one child at a time. And what I mean by that is one of the fundamental principles of the Angel Fund program is that 100% of the money raised by local lodges stays in that community and goes to the kids. All overhead of the, of the Angel Fund is covered by the sponsoring lodge and its operating budget. There are few charity programs anywhere that can make such a claim. Now, this is, this is the important part. The fund provides modest assistance to children in need who do not fit the criteria for usual social service programs. Such assistance might be provided, a pair of glasses, a coat, shoes, field trip fees, or minor health services. The Angel Fund benevolences can cover almost any need that will enhance a child's learning experience. Some Masonic Angel Funds can provide scholarships for music and fine arts instructions. Applications for assistance will be fulfilled via confidential requests from local school principals, counselors, and school nurses. For example, if the nurse discovers the child who needs a winter coat, she simply makes requests to the trustees of the local Angel Fund, who will issue a check to the principal and nurse in an appropriate amount. In cases where professional services are required, the local Angel Fund works for the school to make available our numerous sources of services of this nature. Some of the brothers are healthcare professionals, so there's an excellent chance we may be able to arrange the donation, our products and services. Now, our local lodge here, Friendship Lodge, which I am also a member, we have a local Angel Fund, and I hope the principals out there and school nurses and administrators know and are aware of this, that if there is a child out there, please contact the trustees of the Angel Fund, and it's completely discreet, we don't want to know the child's name, the family. All we want to know is what the situation is and what we can do to help. So, so if there's anybody out there that, if you know of anybody who needs assistance of any kind that we can do, please contact the trustees of the Friendship Lodge Angel Fund to help the kids out there. So, thank you.
So they could send like a note or two trustees of the Angel Fund?
Correct, to the trustee, yeah, Friendship Lodge, to trustees of the Angel Fund, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Marchese. Very nice.
Do you have a phone number?
I will get, I'll give you one.
And Dr. Quick?
Excellent, thank you. Great to know that information. Wonderful work. I wanted to thank you for your well wishes.
Thank you, Mario.
And thank you, Robert, same, thank you for your well wishes and the lovely compliment, I appreciate it. And that's it for me this evening.
I just wanted to, I just have a couple of things. Do you, does the rest of the school committee get these mailings from MASC? I just wanted to make sure. Perfect, so I don't have to worry about that. And secondly, once again, I'm so into everybody working together. The library is putting together Wilmington Reads program as of March 1st, and it is so impressive that we get encouragement, the library encourages the school system, the school system encourages the library. Claire Hitchla, an English teacher at the high school, has done a wonderful job using, excuse me, Michael Pollan's Food Rules book in her classroom, and in choosing one of the rules and they're incorporating into their lives. Oh, I should say, we're doing Michael Pollan, an author, we chose to do an author this time because all four of his books are about health and food, and he was on Oprah last week, so that was very interesting. But we tried to see if we could get him to come to be the keynote speaker on March 1st, and it would be $10,000 to get him here from California, so we're going, there's going to be another keynote speaker who's excellent. Joyce Chaplin, professor of early American history at Harvard University, who's used his books. It's going to be, oh, Thursday, March 3rd at 7:00, and so we're expecting people to, if you can sign up at the library to attend that, should be excellent. But Claire, in her enthusiasm, she's on the committee, the Wilmington Reads Committee every two years, she has spread the word, and not only Claire is using this with her students, but Brandy Torch, food and nutrition teacher, Lois Nardo, health and gym teacher, Catherine Leiford?
Leiford.
Leiford, science teacher, Lisa Desberg, English teacher. It's incredible. Catherine Leiford and Dennis Mahoney will be guest speakers in the wellness class based off of these books, so they even have the assistant prin, the new assistant principal involved in this. So this has become like a community effort within the high school. So the library is very grateful to the high school and for the help, and there's going to be a nice, one of the activities they're doing, they do the activities all in the month of March, and one of them is a visit to Wilson Farms, and only 25 people are able to go, so you have to get down to the library and sign up if you care to go to that Saturday, March 19th at 10:00. But these are at the library, the forms, anyone can get them, and, and as I said, what's impressive is the working together of the two town departments. Dr. Quick?
And this is very timely also, because they got the okay to do the, the local farmer's market this summer, so.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, and the organic chemistry, too, we're trying to get the farm, the Wilmington Farm, and that's what they would like to put into, you know, so the students can go there and grow things and everything else, so.
Be relax lessons.
We pray that everything will work out great, you know. But it'll be great.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
So hopefully people will get involved in the month of March and have an interesting time about that. Other reports we have.
Here you go.
Dr. Quick?
I just was at the Wilmington Education Foundation meeting this past Tuesday, and just some exciting news, thanks to all the endeavors of the Education Foundation and the Wilmington community, has really embraced the foundation, I believe, and we've really done, they've really done an excellent job helping us in our fundraising efforts to raise money for, to help supplement the schools with small grants. And this year, we're able to raise some of the grant money that we're able to give out. Without giving specifics, I just want to kind of go over some of the grants that we have. We have the curriculum grant program, which I believe is currently being looked at now. The technology grants, it used to be called mini-grants, but we've decided to take out the mini as we're raising, raising the funds to go towards those. The Fund for Teachers, which is now going to be called Educators Exploration, and those, is there anything I'm missing? I think those, those are the three big ones, right?
They also supported this.
Oh, and they support, yeah, and they supported the Wilmington Reads 2011 at the library. But those are the big grants that we really, that the Education Foundation really helps to give, and one of the things that I just want to point out is to just, we're also looking for other ideas, for other avenues to be able to give to the school community for grants, and I'm just excited to be able to increase the grants that we're giving this year. Another thing that I wanted to mention, too, is that the vendor fair will be April 1st this year, which is one of our biggest fundraisers for the year, so I really, really encourage everybody to come out for that. It's a lot of fun, it's a great time, and it's for an excellent cause.
Graduation seats that are in, that's the big, for the senior parent.
Oh, what is it?
Parking place for.
Oh, yes, there's one of the, one of the, is it a silent, is that a silent, silent auction pieces is a parking space for graduation day for a senior, to be, senior parents to be able to park at, which I gotta tell you, going to those, going to those graduations, it's, it's hard to come by, so.
And two seats, and two seats on the field.
Oh, and two seats on the field, thank you, Mrs. Benton. So, please, by all means, you have to be there to be able to get that spot for graduation day, and many other excellent. day and many other excellent auction items. So please, April 1st, be there. And that's it.
So good. Thank you. I'm sorry I missed this, that, thank you for this whole March effort. Shame on me because I'm on the friends. Thank you to the Wilmington Education Foundation and the friends of the library for their generous support. The background money that we need has been given to us, donated by both of those groups.
I have one more.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, one more thing to add. One of the great things also that a lot of people don't realize, for the high schools, I guess you, one of the things that seniors need is the 50 hours of community service. Diane Garrity was, was wonderful enough to put this forward. The Education Foundation has partnered with the School Business Partnership to help give, provide these students a way to find out on the website. I believe it's going to be on the high school website so that the students can go on, the students' parents, because a lot of times what will happen is they'll have to go calling different places. Mario, shame on you. And.
Name that, too.
So currently, how it works is they have to go and try to find the different places where they can get the service hours. What this will enable the students and the parents to do is to go on to the high school website and find out what's available so that they can get their 50 hours. It just kind of puts everything together in one area so they don't have to be looking all over the place. So that's very exciting also. Sorry, I missed that.
That's excellent. No, that's great. Okay. One other thing I'm going to, oh, do we have any other reports? I don't think. Before we do correspondence, Mr. Higgins also this week stepped back, stepped down from, Mr. Higgins has a job that he keeps having hopes that he will be here before the end of his term. He'll be joining us again, but at this point, he is working right now in Detroit, Michigan and not able to be with us this week. He's between here and there, so it's hard. So the high school building committee, he's no longer able to do that. And so Mr. Hayes has attended, as he said, he's been attending those meetings. So I'm going to appoint Mr. Hayes in place of Mr. Higgins, if Mr. Hayes is willing to do that.
Sure.
To come on that.
Sure.
Okay. Now, there's going to be, as he told us before, as we come forward, there's going to be more little groups and things that people can become involved in. So there'll be other opportunities. But our next meeting is February 17th. They are, I just want to say they are open to the public.
My second.
And March 2nd will be the next meeting, if anyone wants to attend those meetings.
Can I just give an update?
Sure.
Just for the committee's sake, we are going to the MSBA next, on February 15th to, for the selection of a designer, architect designer. So that's the next phase of the project.
That's excellent. Okay. Okay, correspondence.
Okay. Just one piece of correspondence tonight. The family of Mary T. Moran gratefully acknowledges your kind expression of sympathy. Dear Mrs. Benton and school committee, thanks for the kind expression of sympathy for our mother, Mary Moran and family.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay. Future meeting dates and agenda items. Tuesday, March 1st is going to be our public hearing with the finance committee. So it's always important that as many of us as who can be there attend so that they know that we're interested. And they always have, they always have a lot of questions. And we're there at 7:00 Tuesday, March 1st. It's in room nine at the town hall. And that will actually take the place of our next meeting in February, which would have been during February vacation, so we don't meet then. We use this as our meeting. And then our following meeting will be March 9th, 2011. Okay? So March 1st and March 9th are our next two meetings. All right. Great. Good to see you all. Have a good time till March 1st. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Hayes, do we have a second? Dr. Quick? All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.